So are they gonna pull it, or are you gonna just pull it?
I will. All right, welcome everyone to our Placerville City Council meeting Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. Before we start, I just want to note to everyone that pursuant to Government Code Section 54953B, Councilmember Michael Saragosa will be participating by teleconference from Ojai Valley Inn, 905 Country Club Road, Ojai, California, 93023.
So if anybody wants to go see.
With that, we will call this meeting to order, and everyone rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye, aye, here.
Mayor, no.
Here. All right, number three, we have no ceremonial matters. Number four, closed session report. Attorney Abrahimi.
The council did meet and close session on two items. There was no public comments in advance. The council provided direction to staff on both items.
Thank you. Next is adoption of the agenda, and the applicant is asking to withdraw item 10.2. So can we just do that?
So you can, so, what's that? No, we don't. So we should actually just take a, when you're adopting the agenda, we will remove that at the request of the applicant.
Okay, so, all right.
I'll move the agenda with the removal as requested by the applicant of 10.2.
Second.
Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye. Okay, number six, announcements and presentations to the public. We will start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I have none tonight.
Councilmember Yarborough?
I have none.
Councilmember Saragosa?
I will skip for today. This might be a little too difficult.
Okay. Vice Mayor Clarici?
I have none.
Okay. I just want to point out that Pierre is retiring at the end of this month, so his next meeting on October 22nd will be his last meeting. So if you would like to come and have a piece of cake and say goodbye to him and harass him, I mean, anything that you'd like to say to him, that next meeting, he will be here. And usually, we do that, I think, at 4:00, an hour before the council meeting. All right, those are the announcements. We will move on to consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? No, seeing none. We will open consent calendar for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to number eight, public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. Public comment is open. Seeing none, we will move to 8.2, written communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did not receive any written communications for any non-agendized items. However, since we pulled item 10.2, I do want to mention that we did receive one comment for that item. Copies are placed on the back table for the public as well as posted to the city's website.
Okay, thank you. We will move to item nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. There are none, so we will move on to ordinances. Item 10, 10.1, consider an ordinance clarifying language in the city code to maintain the term of mayor at one year. We're working on technical issues. We're not technically advanced. We're winging it. Okay, all right. Give that back to Cleen. Okay, Mr. Morris, we are on 10.1, and do you?
Okay, thank you, apologize.
Sorry.
Technical difficulties, how's that? At the previous city council meeting, the issue came up, discussed whether or not to consider changing the mayor's term from one year to two years. After discussion, it was noted that the desire was to keep it at one year, and so this ordinance proposes a solution that changes our code to make it clear that it is a one-year term. It actually, they are two-year terms, but they're done every year. I guess that's it. Well, they're not two-year terms, they're one-year terms, but they're selected every two years on even and odd numbered years. It's interesting how it has to be done. Anyway, to meet the, to meet the state law and to meet what your desire is to have it every, every year, so.
We cleaned up the language.
We cleaned up the language, and this ordinance will.
To match what we actually do now.
Yes, this ordinance will allow us to continue to have one-year terms for mayors. So it's our recommendation that you introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading tonight, and introduce the ordinance.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the council? None. We'll open this for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council and consider it introduced as recommended. We don't need to take an action on it, do we? Do we? Okay, let's act.
I'll move the recommendation.
I'll second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, did we take public comment on this item?
Yes, we did.
They don't want to talk to us.
Okay. You know what?
And can I get a repeat on the, on the motion and second, please?
I moved.
I seconded.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye. Michael, are you an aye?
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye.
Thank you.
He didn't, he's not, all right, Michael, are you hearing us, Michael?
Hearing you. I may have to, oh.
Can you reconfirm your aye?
That was an aye.
Just leave it on.
Okay, and so, next item would have been 10.2, but we pulled that item, oh, yeah. So we are on to item 11, public hearings. We have none, which brings us to 12, discussion items, and 12.1 is, consider a resolution of intention to initiate amendments to the text of the City of Placerville Municipal Code Title 10 zoning ordinance to comply with new state regulations on accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we have typically been coming before you probably much, almost on an annual basis now with a resolution of intent to amend the zoning code with respect to changes to the, the housing law with the state of California based on new legislation. So here we have Assembly Bill 2533, Senate Bill 1211, Senate Bill 477, and Senate Bill 1077, and I just want to give the caveat regarding 1077 are for jurisdictions that are within the coastal, subject to the Coastal Act. So that one won't apply to Placerville, but we have, we do have the other ones. We want to investigate and make the necessary code changes. So if the council approves of the resolution of intent to amend our, the text of the zoning code, it basically directs staff then to make the necessary changes to bring our code in conformance with state law. We'll take it to the Planning Commission, so they can review those changes and make a recommendation to the council, and we'll come back to the council. That concludes staff's report.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions from the council? Okay, we'll open 12.1 for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for a discussion and a motion.
I'll move item 12.1.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
No, not anymore. Not anymore.
Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye. Okay, 12.2?
I'm recusing myself on this item because of business relationships that my company has with the two environmental consulting firms that bid on it.
Thank you. Don't let me forget her afterwards.
How can we forget?
Okay, 12.2, consider an agreement with Youngdoll Consulting Group for material testing services for the historic City Hall stabilization project for a total estimated cost of $44,710, CIP 42423. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item before you is a continuation of, of the project for Historic City Hall and the work that we're doing there. In 2022, October of 2022, you adopted an agreement with Arch Nexus to prepare stabilization plans to stabilize the two buildings located at 487, 489 Main Street, known as Historic City Hall Buildings. Including, included in the proposal from Arch Nexus was a clear statement that the, the material testing was excluded from their proposal and would go to another private contractor, a testing consultant that would do that work. And so, we have worked with the Arch Nexus to identify what material testing would need to be done. They met, they had a meeting onsite prior to the bids with both, both consultants and made sure it was clear to them what was needed to be done. Following that, they submitted their proposals, and then there was some, more work after we selected Youngdoll as the most responsible bidder, looking at, kind of negotiating exactly what needed to be done to further refine that. And this proposal before you tonight with Youngdoll represents their revised proposal, request of $44,710. As recall, what we are doing is we are preparing the plans to stabilize the building, and then we have an agreement with Arts and Culture Eldorado, excuse me, to actually do, pay for, raise the funding to actually do the stabilization work, which is estimated somewhere around $400,000. So our previous contract with Arch Nexus, which was 89, or $90,000 basically, and then this additional $49,000 that we're requesting with, in contingency to cover staff costs on the review of this, is the total that will get us to the end of our portion of this to, to prepare the plans to stabilize the building. So what we're requesting tonight is that you approve this agreement with Youngdoll Engineering, and then also approve a budget appropriation from the general fund, unassigned fund balance for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Do we have any questions from council? No. Seeing none, we will open this for public comment. Seeing no one, we will bring it back to council for discussion and a motion.
I will move the staff recommendation.
I will second.
Okay, can I get roll call, please?
Council, Councilmember Gottberg is recused. Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
None of us has a, okay, does anybody here have a power cable for a phone? I mean, this is just. Oh.
Yeah, so the power.
How come, how come it's doing that?
Why does it do that? My phone goes on forever.
Please leave your message.
He's not taking my call. Okay.
Who knew at a city council meeting there wouldn't be enough talking?
All right, then we hit.
The same spot for some reason.
Okay. All right, this brings us to, oh yeah, get the call. See, I told you guys I'd forget.
12.3.
12.3. Okay, 12.3, consider a resolution supporting Proposition 36, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We received a request from the League of California Cities to consider supporting, adopting a resolution supporting Proposition 36, as mentioned, the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. This, this proposition and the changes it proposed would, would actually change some of the measures that were put in place by Proposition 47, which was adopted in 2014. I'm not going to go into all of the things that it does, but I'll mention a few of those that are listed here in the report. It classifies repeated theft as a felony for individuals who steal less than $950 if they have two or more prior theft-related convictions. I think we're all familiar with that, that if you, current law under Proposition 47 is simply a misdemeanor if the theft that they do is under $950. A second one allows stolen property values from multiple thefts to be combined. To repeat offenders can be charged with a felony if the total exceeds the $950, countering tactics by criminals to avoid the harsher penalties that come under a felony or a misdemeanor. Authorizes judges to impose an enhanced penalty when an offender steals, damages, or destroys property by participating in organized theft with two or more offenders or by causing losses of $50,000 or more. So again, these are all items to try and control some of the issues with theft that is, is talked about. In addition, in relation to the, the drug issues, Proposition 36 enables stricter penalties for dealers who, whose trafficking causing death or serious injury and warns traffickers of potential murder charges if continued drug trafficking results in fatalities. It restores drug courts and ensures there is accountability to compete, to complete treatment. Prop 36 will define fentanyl. Fentanyl is a hard drug. I thought this was interesting that, I think we all thought it is definitely a hard drug, but it was not defined as one in, in their current law. Holds individuals convicted of trafficking fentanyl accountable and grants judge, judges greater discretion in sentencing, sentencing drug traffickers. Prop 36 causes, creates a treatment mandated felony. If a person possesses a hard drug, and they're listed here, and has two prior convictions for drug-related offenses. People with two or more prior convictions for drug-related offenses have the option, the option of utilizing a drug court and participating in completing drug and mental health treatment instead of county jail. A drug addiction expert will conduct a substance abuse and mental health evaluation before treatment begins. Those who successfully complete drug and mental health treatment can have the charges fully expunged. And then finally, a treatment program may also include job training and other conditions that a judge finds appropriate for a successful outcome. So basically, I, I worked with Chief Wren on this. You've probably heard a lot about this particular proposition in the news. It's been up, out there quite a bit. The signatures were being gathered, et cetera. This is a proposition, I say, that was done, put on the ballot by the citizens after the required number of signatures were gathered for it. And I'll say somewhat, a little bit my personal opinion, it doesn't go quite far enough for some of the things that 47 does, but it does make progress in bringing back the, what needs to be done in order to hold people accountable, both in the areas of theft and for drug abuse. So that's what I have. There's more information in the, in the, attached to the staff report, and I can try to answer any questions. I'm not an expert on Prop 36, but I'm happy to answer those if, if you'd like me to. Try to.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this for public comment. All right.
Good evening. Ryan Carter, City of Placerville, speaking only as a citizen tonight in no official capacity. I want to encourage you guys to absolutely support this, get behind all the, nearly every sheriff in the state and nearly every chief of police in supporting this. As a member of law enforcement for more than two decades, I've seen the absolute disaster that Prop 47 has been. I would actually encourage you guys to revisit the first whereas on this resolution where it talks about Prop 47 achieving notable success in making California's criminal justice system more equitable. I think that's an absolute lie. We've created an entire generation of victims with Prop 47 over the, oh, since it's been passed. There's nothing equitable about it. There's nothing positive, and there's no success. I would encourage you guys to revisit and possibly remove that first whereas. Beyond that, I love it. Please support this, and I, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. And I think this is a good one. I intend to vote yes.
Thank you, Sue. Seeing as that's all of our public, I will bring it back to the council for a further discussion and a motion.
I just wanted to say, so people understand my vote on this, I haven't read the full text of this proposition yet. I wasn't aware it was going to be on this agenda until Friday, and unfortunately, I had a busy weekend, and I don't take a position on a proposition until I've read the full text. That's just my personal kind of stance, so I plan to abstain on it. So while this sounds good to me, that's the explanation for my vote.
Thank you.
I want to just, we, we talked about this a little bit when we went over the agenda review. I really don't like the California proposition system as it is currently designed and implemented. In my lifetime, more horrible laws have been passed through the wisdom of the people of the state of California than I can count. Many laws never see the light of day because they're so poorly written, they just go into court. Prop 47, good or bad, had high aspirations. And I disagree. Before Prop 47, communities of color and stuff got hacked to death on drug laws, bad drug laws. People were getting, you can shake your head all you want, but, and disproportionately hit. I grew up in a place where kids would take drugs and get arrested and, or get pulled over, and we got sent home. I also went to work with kids and went to school with kids who got arrested, and they got taken to jail. And the only difference was, they were a different color than I was. We should never take these things lightly. We should think about them thoroughly. I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I'm going to say, in about five or 10 years, we're going to be saying, yeah, that Prop 36, boy, I never thought that was going to happen, because that invariably ends up happening with these things. Now, I'm going to vote in favor of this because I have a feeling I'd like to see a unanimous vote go out of this. How I personally vote on this item remains to be seen. I tend to vote against propositions because they're usually just so poorly written. I see this as the Full Employment Act for people that want to do drug rehabilitation, whether it works or not. I think it's going to create some bureaucracies that we're going to sit back and go, wow, look at how that happened. And it'll all be because we have this ridiculous proposition system in this state, and all too often, people can get to vote for things and not really know what they're voting for. So anyway, those are my two cents worth on propositions.
Okay, comments from other council members? Seeing none, I will open this for motion.
I move staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg is abstained?
Yes, abstained.
Councilmember Saragosa? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to 12.4, consider ratifying construction contract change order number 16 through 19, approving contract change orders number 20 and 21 totaling $88,484.07 with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, in the total combined of $86,694.047 for the Broadway Maintenance Project, CIP 42003, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No, and city council members. The item before you this evening will approve and ratify contract change orders number 16 through 21 for the Broadway Maintenance Project. On January 23rd, the city council approved a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, as well as contract change order number one. On June 25th, 24, the city council approved and ratified contract change orders number two through number six. Then on August 27th, 2024, the city council approved and ratified contract change orders number seven through number 15. Since then, some additional unforeseen site conditions, project changes, and other opportunities to deliver a more complete project have come up. The change orders to be ratified this evening include modifications to the broadband conduit installation design resulting in a reduction in project costs, a repair to a leak on the 10-inch water main, and eliminating the work to be performed under change order number five because the Public Works Department wasn't able to fix the fire hydrant instead. Change order number 17 includes a reduction to the pavement grinding and overlay quantities included in this contract. Instead, this proposal includes moving the 2-inch grinded overlay work along the length of new sidewalk to the Broadway Sidewalks contract. This change order also proposes to add stamped crosswalks at the Chanel School Road intersection, which had previously been eliminated from the contract under change order number one. And lastly, there are two supplemental change orders for consideration of approval. Change order 20 is a supplemental to number 12, which covered the cost of unforeseen rock excavation along the new sewer alignment trench. The original cost of change order 12 was significantly underestimated due to the extent of rock that was ultimately discovered along the alignment. Similarly, change order 21 is a supplement to change order 13, unforeseen concrete removal. In addition to rock, the contractor found multiple layers of concrete pavement below the asphalt that required a significant level of effort to remove within the sewer trench. The additional cost of both supplemental change orders totals $175,000, and staff is recommending approval of change order 20 as well as ratifying change orders 16 through 19. I do want to add that the rock excavation experience on this project has been a really good lesson in what to expect on future projects. We have a lot of similar work planned where we will be relocating a sewer line from within the creek to a more appropriate location adjacent to the creek, and we're going to need to find a good way to account for the presence of rock in our cost estimates. Placerville sits in a narrow valley directly next to a creek, and it's very clear that the engineers of the past took the path of least resistance when laying out the sewer alignments. Today, we have equipment to rip through, rip through the rock, but it does slow production, and it comes at an increased cost. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing none, we will open this to public comment.
And Madam Mayor, there was one comment received for this item. It actually is for this, this item and the next item, 12.5, and those copies are also on the back table and on the website.
Thank you.
Sue Rodman, member of the Major H, Major L committee. And all the projects on Broadway show us what really has happened to our city over years and years and years, and projects and projects piled on top of each other. And when we get done with this, I think we will actually have something that will be good, and will last for a while, and we won't have to keep digging it up. So, and getting the sewer out of the creek is one of the things that is absolutely necessary for us to do. So, and yes, it's going to cost us. So, but I support this one. It needs to be done, and it's, we bite the bullet and we pay the cost.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, we will bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor, no?
Aye. Thank you. Brings us to item.
You just died out, died out again.
All right. All right, okay. Item 12.5, consider approving construction contract order number 19 and ratifying CCOs number 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, in the total combined amount of $105,080.99 for the Broadway Sidewalks Project, CIP 41606, and authorizing the city manager to execute. Project, CIP four-one six-oh-six, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same, approving an amendment number ten and notice to proceed number eleven, both in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars to the consulting services agreement with REY Engineers and approving budget appropriations for said project. Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor No. This item before you will discuss for your consideration construction contract change orders and amendment to the agreement with REY Engineers and budget appropriations for the Broadway Sidewalks Project. On December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, the city council approved a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, and the contractor was given notice to proceed with construction on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. On June eleventh and June twenty-fifth, the city council approved construction contract change orders number one through thirteen. Since then, additional unforeseen conditions were encountered in construction that required additional contract change orders. Given the increase in project costs, staff reached out to the El Dorado County Transportation Commission early in the beginning of the summer to secure additional federal funding to cover the additional project costs. Over the last few months, the federal funds were programmed, and tonight, staff is recommending approval of a budget appropriation in urban surface transportation block grant program funds, as well as a small local match. Additionally, staff is recommending approval of contract change orders number fourteen through number nineteen. The unforeseen conditions included modifications to a drainage inlet, an irrigation service found to be in conflict with the sidewalk work, parking bumper modifications, sidewalk design modifications to correct grade discrepancies, and most notably, grinding in paving along the new sidewalk. Originally, the Broadway Maintenance Project contract included all of the pavement grinding and overlay along the length of the road. However, contract change order number nineteen proposes to include the two-inch asphalt grind and overlay in the Broadway Sidewalks Project contract along the length of the new sidewalks, mostly on the north side of the street. If the Broadway Sidewalks Project was a standalone project with no maintenance project, the contract would have included the paving out to the center line to account for grades and provide a clean finish product next to the sidewalk. Additionally, staff is recommending approval of an amendment to the agreement with REY Engineers for construction engineering support services. REY is involved in providing response to design questions and providing the design changes needed for change orders, and given the number of changes on this project, an amendment to their contract is needed. And lastly, I just wanted to provide a brief update on the schedule of the two projects. Everything has been moving along really well, and I truly mean that. Although we've had to roll with many project changes and challenges, the contractor is still on schedule, and they plan to perform the final grinding and paving later on this month, assuming that we still have good weather. I know this project has been very painful for residents and business owners alike. The Broadway corridor is very constrained, and construction isn't fun in those conditions. It's, it's loud and congested and messy, and we just have to get through it. It's, it's necessary. And so I really want to thank everyone for bearing through it with us. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Seeing none, we will open this to public comment.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, this is the other half of the Broadway project, and it too just needs to be done. It's, it is painful, but sometimes that's what you have to do. So I think this is one of those times when you bite the bullet, do the project, and then we can celebrate it.
Thank you.
Ryan Carter, City of Placerville. This is precisely why we build the reserves into these things. This is, this is great. We have the money for it. You're always going to find surprises, and yeah, I encourage the city to continue to build these reserves so we can just overcome these without having to dip in a general fund. This is great. Thank you to the engineering department. It's working out great. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, we'll bring this back to the council for further discussion and a motion. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to item thirteen. Council reports from other agencies and meetings. It will say, El Dorado Transit and the Transportation Commission were two of the fastest meetings we've ever had.
They were so much fun. Literally just.
Our only action item on transit was authorized professional service agreement between El Dorado Transit and regional government services, and on the Transportation Commission approving the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five overall work program and budget amendment one.
That was it.
Okay.
Oh, wait. We did get information, though, on our Highway Fifty thing down here where the truck wiped out part of the decorative wall, that they are going to have the hardware done pretty soon. So that might get buttoned up in the not-too-distant future. That was very exciting. And they're going to replace the fence on the old, on the on-ramp, off-ramp up on Broadway there that's now used as a staging area. The fence had gotten busted up, so they're going to replace the fence up there fairly soon as well. Very exciting.
Yes, thank you. Lafco?
We continue the item on the Cameron Park CSD to our next meeting. There is discussion related to that. If anything related to fire services may be coming before Lafco.
Thank you. Seca?
We meet next week.
Okay. Pioneer?
We meet on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, Placerville Fire Safe Council. I want everyone to know, the resource conservation districts have a community survey on the Placerville Wildfire Resilience Strategy. If you go to the city website, they have that on the front page of our city website as you're peeling through, so you can take that survey. It's also on the Placerville Fire Safe Council's Facebook page. And also wanted to encourage people to hold neighborhood events, to help each other get chipping and brushing and things like that. If you contact the Placerville Fire Safe Council, I'm sure they would be happy to help you coordinate and what that would look like. Opportunity Knox?
We've reallocated the H-HAP one funding that has to be spent by June of twenty-twenty-five. That was for the permanent navigation center construction to operations of the temporary navigation center because the county does not plan to move forward with construction within that timeframe, is my understanding.
Okay. All right. Number fourteen, requests for future agenda items. Oh, public comment on our comments. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Number fourteen, requests for future agenda items. Do we have any? Seeing none, we'll move on to item fifteen, city manager and staff reports.
I just want to mention a couple of things quickly. In conjunction with David, I'll mention the, your next meeting Pioneer will be doing a presentation on, and I think it's on the new solar program. Is that right, David? So it should be.
Correct.
Sounds like a good program, may present some opportunities. I don't know if you want to comment any more on that, David, but it'll be on your next agenda.
Okay, yeah.
And then the second thing, just quickly, I'll mention, I will actually, I'm leaving for vacation tomorrow. I'll be gone until the, through the nineteenth, so the rest of this week and all of next week. So, Mr. Warren will keep you under control while I'm gone.
Thank you. We'll try to be on our extra-good behavior. All right, we will open item fifteen to public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Number sixteen is upcoming items. I will let you read those on your own, and we will adjourn this meeting at five-thirty-eight PM. Thank you.